Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of April 3, 2018, of the Planning Commission. We're at the Veterans Memorial Building on 209 Surf Street in Morro Bay if you want to rush down in here and see the action. Otherwise, we -- looking around, I see we have a quorum. All members are present, and so I call the meeting to order. At this time, can we please have a moment of silence? Okay, thank you. Please rise, face the flag, and we'll begin the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any Planning Commissioner announcements? Michael? Richard? Jesse? Okay, seeing none. At this time, we'll open up public comment period. This is for members of the audience wishing to address the commission on matters not on the agenda. You may do so at this time. You'll have three minutes. Please come forward and state your name.
Good afternoon or evening. Bill Martini. My public comment more has to do with the joint meeting that I was at and both you and the Harvard Department were at. And I wanted to bring up a couple of questions on it. And first off, on the working waterfront, when you -- I'm primarily dealing with south of the boat launch, the southern section you were talking about, and you were talking about from the boat launch all the way to the State Park Marina. Are you talking just the actual water harbor zoning? Are you talking land zoning? Because the actual land, the zoning in there is R1, it's, you know, Esha, it's all different zonings, except for a very thin strip in front of the 20 lots, our cannery and some of the buildings, where it's about a 35-foot wide strip of property that's zone waterfront commercial. So I first wanted to get clarity on that. The second, and the reason being is, the working waterfront, originally the Embarcadero was a working waterfront, and until it's been kind of transformed, because you had the tugs, you had the boatyard, you had all that on the Embarcadero. And that has actually been supplemented with, you know, T-shirt shops, tourist things. The tugs originally were down in front of the Inn at Morro Bay. It was a stockings turned into Sylvester's. Back in the 50s, late early 60s, they were asked to move out of that area because it was becoming more and more residential, and they had to move to the Embarcadero. That's now turned into a motel site. And the point I was making on the working waterfront on the southern part of the bay is actually, in our particular area, there's 28 homes, and there's one boatyard that's working right now. I've had a proposal for mariculture, which is working in that area for probably 10, 15 years, and have been turned down time and time again by the harbor and the city. They've wanted, you know, a parking lot for boats, or they weren't interested in mariculture at the time. And also, we had a boatyard next door that's -- the pollution's been going in the bay, and it's not conducive with mariculture. So there's been issues there. But the main point I was going to get at was, that area has been more or less residential since the 80s. In fact, the zoning was changed from industrial to R1 in the 80s. I heard someone talk about the cannery. You were asking about the cannery that we own. That building is 90% in residential zoning. So just to let you know, that building isn't even in a commercial working waterfront zoning. It's in R1 zoning. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other public comment at this time? Okay, I'll close public comment. And Scott, did you want to address some of those issues?
There's, you know, as it stands right now in the draft, land use map, the draft land use map, for the update of the general plan of coastal program, we're not proposing any real change to the use in that area.
Okay. So, okay, thanks for your comments. We have no presentations scheduled, and we're -- at this point, we've got the consent calendar, item A1, current advanced planning processing list. We have a staff recommendation to receive and file. So I don't think we have any action required on that, do we, Scott?
I'm making a motion to receive and file.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move we receive and file.
Second.
Second.
Do we have any, do we have any comments or discussion on the, on the item or the motion?
One question I wanted to ask for Scott. Could you just bring us up to date for the people watching what's going on on Main Street, the big construction project, North Main?
On North Main?
Yeah.
Sure. That's, it's a 23-unit townhome-type project. It was approved several years ago, and then through legislative extensions, continued forward, and they just started grading, and they're working through their final map application with our Public Works Engineering Division. And so, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what's going to be seen there. It was, that was approved several years ago, but as a result of the recession, the legislature implemented several extensions to existing maps that were in place. And so, and I think there's another one pending right now. So that's why it was approved a while ago and is underway now, and why it's taken so long. The economy wasn't, wasn't right for it to just move forward, I guess, is kind of the scoop.
Wasn't that a split zoning, Scott, with a commercial on the Main Street side that was required?
No.
Because we saw another project there, another proposal, that was...
The zoning in the specific plan in that area, and there's a plan development sort of component to it along with the specific plan, does allow for you to approve residentially, residential-only projects. It's been a point of contention over time, so it's wavered back and forth a bit, from what I can tell, and what you see over there. So I think typically what you were getting would, you know, the more, I guess, reasonable projects that come forward that end up being residential, the ones on the, on the individual small lots, it's kind of difficult to put a commercial building on it. This is not one of those. This is one that was approved as a larger residential, residential project. I don't know if, early on, it ever had a mixed-use component, but that's not the way that it was approved.
Okay. I think I remember a project that came for us that was, and I believe it was denied because it didn't have a mixed-use component on it. And so...
And so, that's, I mean, that's, that's subject to your discretion in, in that area, based on the specific plan. It does allow for findings to be made to allow single-family homes and residential uses to be put there and not have any commercial. I think the intent, though, is that you would have mixed use, and you end up with your residential above and behind, and that type of thing, assuming that you have a site that's large enough. In this instance, I, I not looked back through the history to understand, you know, what the, what the rationale, which the rationale was leading into its approval, but it was approved the way it is with residential only.
So it had a valid...
Yes, it's got a valid tentative map, coastal development permit, conditional use permit.
Oh, okay. I just want to, I did stop by that project, and I just want to make a comment on that project. And I did a little research. I think it was approved like in 2010 or 11, something like that.
Sounds right.
In, in that area. 2008, our Public Works Director had pointed out that our 60-40 main line, the sewer line that they're tying in, was already over capacity. And so, I'm looking at all these six- and eight-inch sewer mains tying in there. So, you know, it doesn't seem like that's a, you know...
Great point, Commissioner Sadowski. We, that was one of the, was one of the things they had to go back in, that before they were able to give them permits to move forward and to evaluate that. You know, we're, per capita, using far less water than we were back then, you know, because the city's been conserving, so there's capacity in the line now again.
Yeah.
So, but they had to go do, they had to go do the engineering study for it, so...
Yeah, but also, our Public Works Director in this WRF project, he's already stated in public that their, their exfiltration rates, they're assuming zero, they're assuming infiltration, but no exfiltration rates. And that exacerbates the problem of sewage entering our drinking water aquifer, the Morro Basin one.
Okay, Richard, we can't, we can't...
But I can't discuss it.
...litigate this, this project right now.
I know, but...
I was looking for just clarification.
You know, yeah.
I think that could be a basis, basis for an appeal if you, if you so desire, but I think we need to bring it back to the, to this, to the matter at hand here. Okay, any other questions for staff on that, on the planning list? Okay. Okay, all in favor of, of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none? Motion passed. Okay, we'll move on to public hearings. Our first, first item is B1, case number SPO-216 and UPO-513. That's 701 Embarcadero, Morro Bay. I think we have a staff report.
Yeah, I'm going to pinch hit for Joe. Do my best. So the application before you is for 701 Embarcadero. That's the Dutchman Restaurant location, lease site down on the, on the waterfront. They've come forward with an application for a sign permit to install two internally illuminated signs, and so we brought the application forward to you for a couple of reasons. In any case, I guess I'll go back to the permitting process for this. Requires a sign permit, and then anything down on the waterfront, they're required to have master sign programs, and then to change those, you have to go through a minor use permit process. And I chose because of issues related to the, the proposed sign type, which was illuminated. We don't have a whole lot of illuminated signage down on the waterfront side of the Embarcadero. You'll also recall that the draft sign ordinance that's waiting for adoption prohibits illuminated signage down there, and that the Planning Commission has had a couple of different conversations in the context of the general plan and LCP and zoning code update, where, and is, and in relation to a couple of the other lease site projects that have come forward on the Embarcadero, voiced concern related to lighted, lighting, lighting in general down there and lighted signage in particular. So we took a look through those policies. We also took a look at our downtown waterfront strategic plan. It has policies that talk about the sign type, and I think I have a slide here that speaks to that in a minute. And I brought it forward at staff's or the director's discretion, because I was concerned that this becomes kind of like a neighborhood compatibility issue in, in my mind, and so wanted to have that, that conversation in a larger context of what we think should be happening down there and what shouldn't. That being said, we did, you know, look at the sign proposal that's, that's in front of you this evening. Their proposal does reduce the amount of signage to bring it within the requirements of our sign, our current sign ordinance. These are some pictures of the signage that they have on the building now. One of the issues is the sign here, they're proposing to remove. It's a kind of, it's a pub-style sign that sticks out toward the front, and our waterfront master plan encourages those types of signs, and they're proposing to remove it. And so we added a condition that requires it to remain for consistency with the waterfront master plan. So going back to the policy issues, the project is consistent with the current sign ordinance. There's, there's no issue from that standpoint, and we've provided a resolution that will allow you to approve it this evening. But it, but the application does raise consistency issues with the design guidelines in the waterfront, in the downtown and waterfront strategic plan. Most specifically, you know, the signs are supposed to be nautically, nautically themed, supposed to use rustic materials, wood, that type of thing. No, not plastic. This is a plastic sign face on it. And then, and again, it raises issues that were pointed out as part of the draft sign ordinance, you know, related to concerns that the Planning Commission and others raised related to having lighted signage down on the waterfront. And then, again, I note that it's also inconsistent with the waterfront master plan insofar as it removes one of the recommended or encouraged types of signs. I think with that, I'm going to leave it at that and, and end the presentation there. Again, we did provide a resolution that would allow you to approve it this evening. You certainly always have the option to continue with direction. If for whatever reason you wanted to deny it, we would have to bring it back with the resolution for denial. And that scenario could play out if the applicant were, you know, interested in, say, appealing a decision or something like that. So those are the options that are before you regarding to the application, and if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions for staff at this time? Joe? Jesse?
No.
Michael?
Scott, I tried to do a mental map for myself. Are you aware of any illuminated signs on the water side of the Embarcadero?
Gray zen, has a can-type sign on a pole.
And we, we went back and forth on that one.
And that, that sign's being relocated to, on, to the building, and the City Council required that, but I think it would still be internally illuminated.
That was a, we were talking about that as almost a historic thing.
Been there for quite a while.
I was having trouble thinking of it.
I'm, I'm having a hard time coming up with, with others. There's a couple on the, on the, on the east side of the Embarcadero along there.
When we had the outreach to the Embarcadero merchants, the illuminated signs come up as a major issue for them.
They didn't really, they didn't express a desire to have them. When we did the last round of, of meetings on the sign ordinance, we met collectively with the downtown and the waterfront folks, and the only concern that was raised was by, you know, one of the hotels down there, that we have customers that are be driving into town at night. It'd be nice if we could have a lighted sign on the east side of the road where their hotel was, and the draft ordinance was revised to allow, to allow that type of signage in that location.
And we did allow them in, the draft, I think, allows them in Quintana and North and South Maine?
Yes.
Okay. Richard, do you have any questions?
Did, um, did you get a chance maybe to talk to Harbor's position on this?
I, I didn't speak with the Harbor Director or anybody in Harbor about it. I, I'm not sure how interested they'd be in signage, but I didn't have the conversation with them.
Okay. Do we have any ex parte communication anybody needs to bring up?
Yeah.
I, I have one item. I, I go down there for happy hour quite regularly, and if you guys haven't, you know, I suggest it. It's, it's well done, so. Okay. At this point, we'll open it up for public comment. We usually have the applicant show up first.
Paul Van Bearden, Dutchman Seaford House. Dear Honorable Chair, Chairperson Lurth, thank you for considering the sign permit, SPO-216, and a minor use permit, UPO-513, and my existing business located at 701 Embarcadero. I've operated Dutchman Seaford House for over fif, for over 32 years. My family has had businesses in Morro Bay for over 50 years. I'm requesting for additional signage and my business, the Dutchman Seaford House. I firmly believe that with additional signage, my business will increase and contribute to additional revenue to the city and thereby contributing to the, and to assist in economic vibrancy of Morro Bay and Renaissance, and the Renaissance along the Embarcadero. I review the staff report issued by the city staff and concur with the staff's recommendation to approve my proposed signage and amendment to my existing sign program and my business. However, I would like to take this opportunity to discuss issues that are present, presented in the staff report that appear to potentially sway your decision to deny my additional signage. I feel it's appropriate to share my thoughts on this issue and provide some additional information that has been omitted from the report. I would like to remind the Planning Commission that this application has been deemed complete, and that my, my proposed signage is consistent with the current zoning ordinance that allows for eternally illuminated signage. Denying this proposed signage based on future amendments that have not been adopted by the City Council and its California Coastal Commission is contrary to the vested rights that have been addressed by the California Supreme Court and AFCO community developers with the South Coast Regional Commission, 17Cal.3D785, LA Number 30514, Supreme Court of California, August 25, 1976. The Court has determined that the general rule that a builder and applicant must comply with the laws which are in effect at the time of the permit is issued, including the laws which were enacted after the applicant, application for the permit. In this instance, I have filed a minor use permit for an amendment to the existing signage program in which the existing ordinance allows for illuminated box signs. The draft ordinance is just that. It's a draft. I request that the Planning Commission follow staff's recommendation in approving amendments to the signage program on this lease site and make the proper findings based on the codified ordinance. The staff report points out that my proposed eternally illuminated signs are not in compliance with the adopted downtown and waterfront strategic plan, DW, DWSP. These guidelines are meant to assist business owners on signage ideas, and are just that. They're guidelines. In Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, 135 CT 2218, 2224, 2015, Supreme Court made it very clear that municipalities can only regulate the following: the time, the place, the manner in assigned ordinances from local municipalities must remain content neutral. City staff is attempting to infringe on my First Amendment right by dictating the manner of which themes, lettering, topography, et cetera, are used to advertise my business. While, again, the DWSP is a guideline, this guideline is not a requirement. It may run afoul of Reed versus the Town of Gilbert. I hope you and your fellow commissioners take this into consideration when reviewing my proposed signage. I recommend the Planning Commission amendments amend its draft resolution CEQA determination to include the CEQA exemption Class 11, Section 15311, accessory structures as my proposed signage consists of construction or placement of the sign, onsite signage, which is a prudent to my existing commercial business. This exception provides a greater amount of consistency with proposed project versus the Class 1 exception. Again, I request that you and your fellow commissioners approve my proposed amendment to the existing in signage program for the Dutchman Seaford House, as recommended by the city staff. I look forward to continuing to provide a welcoming and beautiful dining experience located in these cities in Embarcadero, especially for happy hour. If you have any questions, and for my proposed signage amendments, please don't hesitate to call me. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. If we have questions, we'll call you back after public comment. Do we, anybody else wish to speak to this item?
Yeah, just real briefly, as far as Paul and his signage, if it helps his business. Number one, I was going to mention, getting back to the working waterfront, I remember in the 50s, the 60s in Morro Bay, you did have the neon-type, you know, lit-up signs that is classic, early Americana. So I think that can work on the waterfront, and as far as the Van Bearden family, I mean, they've been on the waterfront, holding up the, their end, and I think just to allow them to put up this type of signage for their business, I think it only makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to? Please state your name.
Yes, hi. My name's Alfredo Rafael Castillo, and I'm here in support of the Dutchman Seaford House. Noticed in your deliberations that you asked the Director Graham approximately how many lighted illuminated signs are along the Embarcadero. Just in a cursory Google Street View, it's approximately four to five illuminated signs. So those include both the box letter signage. As a matter of fact, there's one in front of the China buffet, and a couple of what we consider channel letter raceway signage. So hopefully that helps to clarify what exactly is out there in terms of your, your existing conditions. And again, I do recommend that staff, that you do take staff's recommendation and approve the signage, just as Mr. Van Bearden said, it is a draft ordinance at this point, and you have to take that into consideration, that you have an existing ordinance that has been applied for at this point and juncture, and that really should be what's consideration on your table today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak to this item? Okay, do we have any? Joe, do we, do you have any questions for the applicant? Jesse for the applicant? Michael for the applicant?
Mr. Van Bearden, do you have any studies that show that sign change changes business?
Mr. Van Bearden, could you please come forward?
You, you made the statement that you thought the sign would, the sign would attract more business. Are you saying that you've got evidence that it attracts more?
No, of course not. I mean, I mean, of course not. I don't have evidence to say, but, you know, my intention there was to clean up the signage there and remove some of the existing ones and just simplify it. I mean, you know, if, if people are coming down the waterfront, I ask people all the time, "Well, you know where the Dutchman is." "Oh, you know," is it, "Well, it's next to roses and between there and windows underwater." If you're coming down the hill, a simple sign in that area, I think, would benefit. I do.
You're aware of the discussions that illuminated signs are seen as aesthetically inferior?
Have the discussions?
Let's clarify, Michael.
So it's an opinion, is what it is.
Excuse me, let me just clarify. We're talking about internally illuminated signs.
Yeah.
Not illuminated signs.
Right.
Okay.
Sorry. That's right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Sorry to interrupt. Richard, do you have any questions?
No.
No, not? Okay. I think I'm good with that.
Thank you.
With your... Okay, at this point, we'll close public comment. Do we have any discussion or questions for staff? Who wants to start? Joe?
I have a couple of questions. Just obvious. My, my understanding that the, the signage would require a permit before installation, is that correct?
So they're required to get a sign permit. You're required to get a sign permit for any sign that you put up.
Right.
And in this instance, because it's down on the waterfront, you're also required to get a minor use permit, you know, so it heightened level of review, because the waterfront projects, as you're aware, you've seen several of them, go through a concept, precise plan process, where you go to Planning Commission, City Council for concept, then it goes off to the Coastal Commission, and then it comes back to the Planning Commission for precise plan approval. Part of that is their overall sign program that has to be submitted along with that. Hence the reason for the minor use permit, sort of elevated level of review for changes to the sign program, which, again, is sort of another reason why it's sitting in front of you this evening. It's, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you're, you utilize the existing zoning code for anything, or the new, the new draft zoning code for any reason as it relates to this application. It just raises issues that the Planning Commission has expressed over time with lighted signage down there. So then it becomes, is it the signage appropriate for there in the context of that lease site and the adjacent lease sites that are there? You, and then it does raise questions related to the consistency with the downtown and waterfront strategic plan, which calls for different materials and different themed signage. So I was, that, whenever, if the idea was that we were suggesting that you deny it on the grounds that the proposed draft sign ordinance eliminates internally illuminated signage from being an option there, that's not what we're doing. It really is more along the lines of, is it compatible with what's down there?
And then I would, I would, I would guess that prudence usually suggests that a permit should be obtained before the signs are actually constructed.
Correct. If you, moving forward and having the signs constructed prior to that, you're doing so at your own risk.
And then the third question is, this board clearly has the discretion, even in the absence of the approved new signage guidelines, to exercise its discretion and say, "No, these, these illuminated signs, internally illuminated signs will not be allowed." We have that discretion.
You do. You, you certainly can. You can say it's inappropriate for the area, it's inconsistent with the, you know, the theme of the buildings that are down there. You also have the ability, because it's in our current code, it does allow for illuminated signage, you, you could approve it. I mean, it's, hence the reason I gave you a resolution to allow you to... I mean, hence the reason I gave you a resolution to allow you to do that. You know, it's an unfortunate scenario that the applicant finds himself in, in that he did move forward with having the signs built. I mean, I feel bad about that, but it doesn't alleviate the issue. And so, hence the reason I brought it to you, so you could have the discussion and make the determination about what you wanted to do with that. I mean, it's, again, it's been on your radar for a little while, so.
Jesse?
No questions for staff.
Michael?
If this is appealable to the council and the council would approve, is it appealable to the Coastal Commission?
It doesn't have a CDP with it, Coastal Development Permit, so it's just a sign permit and a minor use permit.
Richard? Okay. Okay, I don't have any real questions on this. We do have, you know, this is essentially a part of a precise plan, so I guess I'm going into comment now. We do have the ability to approve or disapprove of materials down there as aesthetic, you know, aesthetic considerations, because we have those determinations. So, so let's open it up for discussion among the commissioners as far as how you feel on this. Michael, you want to start or?
Well, I appreciate Mr. Van Bearden's family and his business. I think you've done some of the most attractive renovation work down on the Embarcadero and, you know, all of your businesses are quality ones that I think have contributed. I'm gonna have to say though, that I think, given the nature of the way we've been consistent in asking people to go to signs that have the illumination onto the surface rather than inside the sign, I think my concern is the signs that I've seen developed in town that are internally illuminated consistently make me think of Morro Bay as a denigrated place rather than an aesthetically brought forward place. I love your signs that you've got there now. I think the Embarcadero is a walkable place. When I see the hotels on North Main, one that I drive by twice a day that I can see at night illuminating Japan on the waterfront, they disturb me. And I think the dark skies from the water, I'm concerned the side sign, the side of the building sign might be seen from the water. And I just don't see a need for it, especially given the volume of signs that we're allowing. It's not speech, we're allowing the speech, we also don't allow someone to have a large sign and spin it out in front. I think that's another mistake people make. So I'm happy to suggest that we continue the aesthetic judgment that we've been pretty consistent on, say no.
Richard?
Yeah, I, when I look at things like this, I look at, like, even in the Barcadero, I go around and think neighborhood compatibility, you know, what's compatible. And we have discussed this and the compatibility of illuminated signs, it's something that we as a board have, or a commission have kind of veered away from, especially on the, like, the waterfront. When I flashback, I used to live in Marina Del Rey and I remember looking out across the bay and to me, when you're on the harbor, there is an artistic element to it. And I think that illuminated signs distract from that.
Internally.
Internally illuminated signs distract from that.
Well, I think clearly the issue isn't signage, it's whether that signage should be illuminated internally, so I agree with Commissioner Lucas, this is not a free speech issue. And I also know, I also believe that business owners, as members of the community, know about the discussions that are going on in the community or have some sort of punitive knowledge of that. That being the case, it'd be reasonable to consult with the Development Office as to not only what the current restraints are, but what are some of the proposed restraints. I agree with the aesthetics are sort of violated by these, the desired aesthetics are sort of violated by these internally illuminated signs on the Embarcadero. But most persuasively, these, the guidelines with respect to illumination are really the community speaking as to what the community wants. And because we have that discretion on this board in terms of aesthetics, I think we have an obligation to sort of, to represent what the community's values are in this respect, and so I would be opposed to it.
Jesse?
I agree with the rest of the commission here. I thought I was going to be in the minority here opposing this, but I agree with everything everybody said, it just doesn't seem like the right, the right thing.
And I'll echo what I've heard tonight. I'm trying to rack my brain and I can't think of one instance where we've approved on a precise plan that's come before us, any internally lit, illuminated signs on the Embarcadero. You know, I think we, you know, that the allowable signage square footage is available and can be illuminated adequately with downward facing lights that can, that can really show it off and give you the punch that you're looking for and not create the other problems of glare, night sky, illumination, uncontrolled illumination from the fixtures that internally illuminated signs do, especially on the waterfront, especially, you know, when we're dealing with navigational issues and, and, you know, the ability to destroy someone's night, you know, night vision as they're trying to navigate that channel that's close by. So I would have to concur with my fellow commissioners and I think at this point, let's look for a motion. Somebody wish to?
So a couple of things before we make a motion. The only thing that you have, the only actionable thing you have before you is a resolution for approval. So, one, you might want to ask the applicant if he wants to get back up here. So if he's interested in just moving along, and I think he understands where you're at, if he wants to move it forward, then he can tell you that we have to come back at the next meeting and I just put it on consent, would be the resolution for denial, and then he would be able to appeal it from that, that point forward.
Okay, Scott, let me bring him forward.
Thank you.
I meant to do that, no, thank you for reminding me. We'll open.
One question, are we still dealing with that, this sign here and the one?
The pub sign? We haven't, we?
That's going to be separate?
I think that's going to be a separate issue, we'll need to discuss that. Mr. Van Bearden, would you, I'll open public comment, would you like to, you know, we can talk about your options here. We can either continue this item and see if you want to bring back an amended version of the sign plan, or we can deny the item and you can appeal to the, to the City Council.
Right.
I think, you know, we want to have.
No, I understand, absolutely understand. The sign itself, and you know, I was just talking to Mr. Ritchie, and it's, what I'm hearing, I agree, you know, you don't want to see signage that popped out, but I don't believe the sign is, you know, this flashing Vegas thing, it's like, you know, and there could be some solutions to that, is, you know, have limited time of illumination at night, whatever else. And, you know, if you look where that sign is situated, it's in the very peak there, so I'm not sure if there's going to be a lot of, you know, light that pulls out. I mean, I could be wrong, but, you know, he just, Mr. Ritchie just said he lit it up in the shop and it's, again, it's not, you know, this Vegas light thing. And I agree with that, so I'm going to have to think about that, to be honest with you. And I'm not sure.
So do you have any recommendations on how you want, you want us to just to move the item for?
So I guess there's a couple, I understand that you don't really want to make your decision right now about what you want to do, so, okay, that's fine. So why don't we, why don't we do a couple of things? Normally this stuff, unless you want to see it, wouldn't come back to you. So if he's in agreement with providing signage that's compliant and not internally illuminated, then you can direct him and remand it back to staff to deal with the application and move it forward, so we don't have to delay him any further. If he decides that, no, he wants to move forward with that, then I'll re-agendize it with a resolution that would be for denial and we'll do this again. And I mean, happy to accommodate, give him a little bit of time to make his decision. And if you would like to do that, that's great. If you, if you don't want to remand it back to staff, then it would be a continuance to a date uncertain and then it would come back, so it's up to you.
So we would continue it to a date uncertain at this point and then you would work?
So, two things, it depends on what the commission wants. If you want to see the revised signage come back to you, then continue it to a date uncertain, I'll work with the applicant. If, if you're okay with staff dealing with it going back, because it's not going to be internally illuminated based on the direction here, then staff will take it forward, will work with Mr. Van Bearden on trying to come into compliance if he's interested in doing that. If he's not, then we will bring it back with that resolution for denial, that would give him the opportunity to appeal the decision to council. It's, the only nuance there is remanding it back to staff to deal with, bringing it into compliance, or no, you want to see it, so just continue it to date uncertain and then we'll bring it back. Either we would bring back to the Planning Commission a compliant program that he's, a signed application that he's brought forward, or the resolution for denial that he's requested.
Okay. Scott, I think if you concur, you know, I think we only have a couple items that are, there's only a couple of issues on this. And I think we can give direction to staff, you know, on what our considerations are, and then that may help you move forward quicker. And if we, if you do, if you do decide on a denial, I think we can do it on a consent calendar and then that would allow you to move forward quicker to take it to the, to the City Council.
Either way, I commit to you, whenever you make your decision, we'll move forward one way or the other.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's bring back this discussion there. I think that the main items are the illumination, you know, internally illuminated signage and our recommendation for the pub sign. You know, that's whether we would like to see it maintained, but that's part of the square footage on the allowable signage that he's allowed. So we've, we've made our opinions clear on the, on the internally illuminated signs, so how do we stand on the pub sign? Let's go, Richard.
I like it. I, I, I don't, I don't see any need to, to remove it.
He's, you know, with his, the way I understand his proposal, he's proposing to take it down so that he can use that square footage for the other, for other signage. So our question is, would we like to see the pub sign remain? And he would have to make the other signage smaller in square, in overall square footage to allow for that.
You know, you know, I'm not going to like fight on a hill certain things, you know, since we're going to direct staff to talk. My opinion, you know, I would like to see it on, but if he has another idea that he needs, you know, for that thing, I'm okay with that too. But for me personally, I think, I think that is a nice feature. This is kind of, I see the artistic value of it. That's, that's my opinion.
Okay, Jesse?
I agree with Commissioner Sodowsky. I'm a libertarian at heart, so I think Mr. Van Bearden's First Amendment rights are well noted, at least. So I mean, the nautical theme is a great idea and I think it's at the, where we want to lean. However, since we're directing staff to not be internally illuminated, I think we should be willing to compromise and be willing to give a little.
Joseph?
It's my recommendation that the pub sign should remain, but I would draw the line in insisting that my idea of a good sign should, should be the one that we follow. So it's a recommendation, but nothing beyond that.
Michael?
Well, I also prefer the pub sign, but I don't want to have that be part of the resolution. If something comes back that's non-internally illuminated, that I leave it to the discretion. I think Mr. Van Bearden has, on all of his properties, has exercised extraordinary discretion in choice of materials and design and things like that. This is the only thing, the internal illumination's the only thing I have an issue with.
And I would, I would concur. I like the pub sign there, I think it actually is a, is a good feature and I think it's actually beneficial to, to the site for people walking on the sidewalk. You know, that's their only point of reference that they can pick up at his, at his entry. But that would just be my, my recommendation, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hang approval or not on that.
I'm comfortable with where you're at with this.
Yeah.
I guess the thing is, we don't want to condition any resolution for against the pub sign.
Right. I'm fine with that.
Right. Okay, how do you want us to word this?
So really, if you just want to sort of push the application back to, I mean, do you want to see the sign back, or do you want staff to deal with it?
No, I think we, I think we can have staff deal with it.
Okay, so then just that would be the motion that you remand the thing, you ran the application back to staff, because this is the level it's supposed to be reviewed, I just brought it up because it raised an issue. So you can deal with that and I'll do what I said I'll do in dealing with, working with Mr. Van Bearden about what he wants to do. When he makes his decision, we'll go one way or the other and if he brings back the compliant sign application, then I happily will give him a permit and he can go about his merry way. If he wants the denial, we'll certainly turn that around as fast as we can and get the resolution on the Planning Commission agenda so he can get through that process as quickly as he can, so.
Okay. So do we have somebody who would like to formulate the motion to?
Oh, I'll, I'll give it a shot. I think we're remand, or moving to remand back to staff so that Mr. Van Bearden can propose a non-illuminated, non-internally illuminated sign for staff to discretionally approve.
That's great.
Second?
I'll say.
Discussion? Discuss that? Okay, can you call the question?
You can just.
Okay.
We'll call them.
Is all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five oh. Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number B2, case number UPO-503, ADO-126, site location 458 Dune Street in Morro Bay here. And we have a, do we have a staff report ready on this? Technology strikes again.
I guess I will take this opportunity to introduce Nancy. She's our newest planner and she's taken the position that Whitney McElvein used to hold and we're very happy and fortunate to have her. She comes to us from the other side of the counter, was working with applicants and processing applications and that type of thing. So, and we're happy to have her and these are our first couple of items, you know, for presentations to the Planning Commission, so exciting night.
Thank you. This is 458 Dune Street and this is an application for planning approval for expansion of a non-conforming existing residence. An overview, the existing home is 1935 and it is non-conforming related to the side yard, the front yard and the parking. The applicant is proposing a ground floor addition at the back of the home and a partial second floor addition, also set back from the street and the side. The zoning is R4. The existing home is 651 square feet and the proposed addition on completion would result in a 1,296 square foot home. result in a 1,296 square foot home. This is a view of Dune Street looking west, and I'm pointing out the two-story homes in the vicinity. There's one directly behind the subject home, down at the end of the block and across the street. This is Dune Street looking east, and there's a few more at the corner of, I think that is Monterey? Napa? Napa? How about that? There's a two-story addition that's just out of the view. There's a couple of two-story apartments and two-story homes and a two-story addition off to the south. This is a table that tells you what the zoning ordinance standards are, and in red are those items that are non-conforming. For front setback, the existing posts for the front entry roof area are 10 feet setback, whereas the rest of the home is 15, which is in compliance. The side yard setback is four feet, two and a half inches, and the required is five feet, and the new addition will comply. So, the second floor addition will comply with the setback. And then parking, two-car garage is required. This is a 1935 home, which has a very long driveway and a garage set back at the back of the lot, and it has one-car garage and plenty of spaces for tandem parking in the driveway. They are not proposing any change to the existing garage or storage building, just to the back of the existing home. This is a view of the existing home. You can see the garage set back and the long driveway. This is a view of the existing home with the proposed photosimulation of the addition. You note the addition is a partial second floor with a deck looking west. It's set back from the front of the house, and it's set back from the side of the nearest neighbor. This is a floor plan. It just shows you the area. It's in the back. This is the ground-level addition. It's at the back of the house, where they're remodeling kitchen, creating a dining room, and expanding. This is the new second floor, which adds a master bedroom and bath. I think I had those backwards. This is here. Now, we're at the second floor. These are some elevations of the proposed addition on the house from all different angles. This is the south and the north, the east and the west. And that is the end of the proposal, and staff has recommended approval of this project.
Do we have questions for staff? Joseph? Questions? Jesse?
No.
One question. On the standards, I probably shouldn't know this, but I'm going to ask anyway, where it says the height is 30 feet, and is that because it's R4 zone?
Yes, but in order to be similar to design standards for the other single-family homes in the area, this is designed to 25 feet.
Okay. Michael, any questions? Do we have any ex parte communications? Is Claire? No? Okay. I don't think I've got any questions on this one right now, so we'll open this up for public comment. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name?
Hi, my name's Libby Matting, and I didn't prepare a one-page briefing. I moved into this area several years ago, and it was just me, and then I got a dog. And then I got married. And in my garage, I had one wetsuit and a surfboard and a bike. And then my husband moved in, and nine months ago, we had a daughter. And so, my little 635 square foot house, although it's so cute, it's small. And so, we don't want a giant house, but we want one that'll fit our family, and we love Morro Bay and we love where we live. And so, we're just asking for a second bathroom, not a wash closet. And so, yeah, that's my...
Okay. Well, thank you. Do we have anybody else wishing to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Okay, how about discussion or questions for applicant? Any? I'm not seeing much. I think everybody's pretty much...okay. Okay, I'll just have a couple of little comments. You know, I think it's a well-done project, and the only, just little oddity I see is that there's a, I think it's more to deal with the drafting, but it looks like there's a wall line that's hanging out over the eaves on the exhibit B, but maybe not. Maybe that's just how it...
It's actually the perspective, and that side of the house by the driveway does pop out. But when you look at it from a certain angle, it looks like the second floor is sliding off to the east.
Okay, yeah.
They won't build it...
It would not be a very structural way to build it.
Right.
So, that was just my only comment. It looks like everything else stacks in the way it should. Okay. I, you know, we've done tandem parking before on several of these projects, and this is a 30s house, and, you know, it fits right into the, right into the, what we've done consistently. So, do we have a motion?
I have some...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but I have a few things to say, but it will turn out fine, I think, after I finish my long-winded comments. But I feel obligated to do this. And the design of the house is charming, and it will be a benefit to the community. But for once, I'd like to do the analysis without balancing the suitability of the design versus the disadvantage of granting still another parking exception, which we seem to do at a very regular basis. So, I think my comments are really more for the commission than for the applicant. But I was thinking long and somewhat hard about this. So, I personally don't have any problem when an addition is relatively minor addition, is it a kitchen or a bathroom or a closet? But when there's a major expansion of a house, then very often, or maybe always, the number of automobiles associated with that expansion increase, because you added upstairs, and perhaps when the house is sold, a larger family buys, more cars. Or more guests come because the house can accommodate more people, and more cars come. Or perhaps even a room is rented out, and more guests come. So, and I've said often before at this board about parking being a blight on the community, and sometimes, particularly in some of the streets of Morro Bay, where parking forced to be on the streets, because we all know that tandem parking is really not observed because of the inconvenience factor creates a safety hazard on some of these narrow streets. And most importantly, it places the onus of that additional car, the burden on the neighbors who now find someone else's car parked in front of themselves. I've said all that before. So, it seems to me that so often, we observe the rule that there should be two enclosed parking spaces, except when someone doesn't want that, and then we sort of grant it for a variety of worthwhile reasons. But I'm really concerned about establishing precedence here and not being arbitrary when other people present an application, and we don't really want to do it then. So, I think we should have some guidelines. And I've thought before that we should, well, we could do this when the property allows for some sort of non-tandem parking within its property bounds. Okay? That would be one, I would support this. Or if there were parking on the parkway in front of the house, or even if the streets were not particularly narrow so that the added parking space, and that the neighbors should not perceive that there's a parking capacity problem in the neighborhood. So, I would say, those are like four categories, and I'd say if the applicant can meet, say, three of those four qualifications, then we grant the exception. And in this case, there is parking in front of the house, the street is not terribly narrow, and I don't, without talking to the neighbors, I would guess that the neighbors don't really feel that they've reached a maximum parking capacity, so I would grant it here. But I think we ought to have some things with which to hang our decision on in the future. Otherwise, we're sort of wandering.
Well, a couple of things we normally do hang our decision on is the ability to put in the two-car covered garage non-tandem without demolition of a major chunk of the existing structure, and if it's allowed, if it fits on the site. And so, you know, with this, we would, there would be a, there would, we're only talking about 200 square feet above what our requirement for a single-car garage is. We're talking about a minimal addition. We're talking about, you know, several additional tandem parking spots available. And we're also talking about to do a two-car garage, they would essentially have to take off part of the existing first floor of the structure to get the turning radius to get into the garage there, into a two-car garage in the back. So, that's, I think those are our conditions that we've used in the past to approve or not approve, you know, tandem parking.
But in part, that's my point. See, the notion of requiring the house to essentially be mostly demolished and then redesigned to afford a two-car parallel parking is really draconian, and we're not prepared to do that. So, as a result, we concede to the exception. And I'm thinking we need some other guidelines, because, you know, frankly, it's very rare that we can say, yes, you have the choice here of, you know, building a two-car parallel spaced garage. I think we need sort of an in-between ground and some guidelines for those in-between grounds where most of the situations fall.
Okay. I think this would be an item that we would probably need to set up as a discussion rather than as a, you know, discussion on this project. And I think you bring up some really good points.
Yeah.
And I think we do need, you know, it would help to clarify, and it would probably help staff to be able to go through a checklist of what's, you know, what our criteria would be, but so...
So, let's talk about that at the end of the meeting, maybe, about, you know, how we might bring that back.
Okay. Because, you know, we don't want to, you know, I don't think we do this willy-nilly, but we don't want to be perceived as doing it as such, too.
I really appreciate what Joe is saying here, because that kind of, it's kind of like the guidelines that we have, qualifications.
Yeah. Richard, let's talk about this at the end of the meeting. We'll bring this up as a discussion item.
Have you got something specifically for this project?
I just wanted to comment that I thought the design was exceptional. When we look at our design guidelines, the idea that this thing is cascading back, the little trace of the roof on the side, the, it's not really a second floor so much. It's almost a tower. It's kind of square, and it moves back on almost every elevation. So, I think it's really interesting. It wouldn't surprise me at all to have the capacity to do a two-car garage in the backyard someday with a granny unit above it. And we still would have room to park on-site without getting out on the street. And so, I think it's just great. I'd love to see that story repeated over and over again, that instead of the tear-down with a 5,000-square-foot house, you do something modest. So, I really appreciate it.
Were you finished? I'm sorry. Okay. I think we also need to, typically, we kind of throw in a red flag on this, that this parking exception runs for this, you know, this project, you know, and not, is not a blind, you know, a blind check for future development, too. So...
So, if you wanted, we could add that as a condition.
Regarding the design, I just want to comment that I, to agree, I really like the articulation, and I love the porch on the side, that closed porch.
So, let's get a motion.
Okay. And I want to, I said at the beginning of my remarks, but I really do appreciate the design. And again, my remarks were really, you meant to give us some added insights for the future and not in any way reflect what you should be able to do with your house.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a motion?
Before you make the motion, do you want to have the condition in here that if any future addition is proposed, that the parking exception is reconsidered?
I would like to see that. Does, is that concurrent?
No.
Concur?
I don't.
No?
Okay.
May I speak? That is actually, not do we interrupt? I apologize.
We've actually closed public comment. Do we wish to...
Is that a condition?
Yeah, go ahead, come forward, and let's, you know, we'll open up public comment again.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I didn't know you'd closed it already. I just wanted to point out that that condition is already in the staff report, that future development will have to be, the parking will be reevaluated.
Okay.
Thank you.
I missed it in there, so...
No worries. Yeah, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much for that.
I understand.
Do you...
Maintain my non-concurrents.
I actually wanted to say something. You know, by not allowing these additions because of parking exceptions that were, you know, legal non-conforming, people are going to do what they have to do. People are going, we're going to end up with, you know, RVs and occupied RVs in the driveways and things like that. People are going to have to live their lives, and that's just my take, so.
It is, it's planning condition five. I didn't actually realize it was in there either.
Oh, okay, well, yeah.
That's correct.
Well, great. Thanks for pointing that out. I missed that in my read-through on this. Okay. Well, and also, you know, just as a general comment, too, for, I think there's going to be, you know, in the next 20 years, there's going to be, you know, automobile use is going to change, and I don't know how we're going, how it's going to change, but it is going to change. So, we may have shared vehicles, we may have, you know, everybody on the hyperloops or whatever, but it is going to be changing. Okay. So, let's see if we can get a motion on this.
I'll move we approve Planning Commission Resolution 918 that includes findings and conditions for approval for 458 Dune Street, as depicted on the site development plans dated March 13, 2018, and February 27, 2018.
Okay. A second?
A second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Commissioner Sodowsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Barone.
Aye.
Commissioner Ingraffiat.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lucas.
Aye.
Chairperson Lor.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Have a great project. Okay. Item B3, this is an amendment of PC Resolution 5-16. I think we've got a five-minute break we'll call for. We'll adjourn for five minutes. We can wait. We can wait. Okay, okay, we're live. We'll bring the meeting back, back to order. And so this is, item B3, it's an amendment of PC Resolution 5-16 approving CPO-470 and UPO-415. The site location was at 1149 West Street in Morro Bay. And this was a house that we, that came before us and was approved with conditions. And can we, do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Thank you. So Resolution 516 included a planning condition number 19 that was added during the meeting that prohibited a driveway gate along the front property line. The property owner has installed a six-foot fence along the front property line and would like to install a driveway gate also along the front property line. This shows you the neighborhood. So West Street is in the center, off to the left. All of the homes and the lots on the west side are residential, single-family residential. And on the other side is a mix of commercial and residential. Three of the existing homes on the west side of West have driveway gates along the inside line of the sidewalk. This gives you an idea of what the zoning is in the area, and I've noted the subject property at 1149 West Street. The applicant has submitted arguments or documentation for their position in requesting this amendment. And I have kind of summarized some of them, but the argument number one is the area of West Street in this particular block is unique because it's residential on one side and commercial on the other. And some of the commercial on the other are properties that span the entire block. So their front is on Scott Street and the back of the house is on West Street. They also are concerned that there is non-resident vehicles in the area and that there is a transient population passing through the neighborhood daily. Staff's response is that it is a mixed-use block, but it's predominantly residential and a mix of residential and low-impact businesses. The photo shows the auto business across the street has backed their car into the applicant's driveway as they're shifting cars around in a crowded car lot. Argument number two is the site distance while backing out of the driveway will not be impaired by a fence and a driveway gate with an open design. And we agree with that. And this is a view from, with the driveway in the foreground looking north. Argument number three is other property owners on the west side of the street have installed driveway gates and fences for the same security reasons as applicant. And I wanted to note, before I wrote the staff report, I had heard from two neighbors, both phone calls or in a visit by the city office. One was in support of the driveway gate and has the same security concerns as the applicant. The other was not in support of the request and says there's no issue with transients or commercial businesses in that area. The photos at the bottom are the three homes that have existing driveway gates. The first one has an existing gate and fence at the back of the sidewalk that are approximately five feet high. I was not able to find any approval records in the files. The second one is an existing gate and fence about five feet high. It was approved in 2006 with the condition that it be according to our zoning development standards, which is three-foot-high solid fence or four-foot open-style fence with a four-foot driveway along the edge of the sidewalk. The third one is a 1925 house that has an existing block wall and wood driveway gates, and the block wall ranges from five to seven feet high. Again, that's 1925, and I was not able to find any records. Applicant argument number four is the condition for no driveway gate was added without much discussion as to why it was prohibited. Staff has researched the overlay zones and the primary zoning and has found that the PD zone allows for modifications to the zoning development standards in the primary zone to achieve better designer compatibility. And the residential design guidelines encourage development design that create entryways that are open and visible from the street. The photo here is from the corner of West and Surf Street looking south towards the applicant's property. And that is a single-family home with a three-foot open-style fence in the foreground. And that concludes the presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff?
So you're saying that none of the houses adjacent have record of approval of any of those constructions the way they are in the field right now?
Not the way, not the way they are.
Are you, are you aware if any of the owners have placed drop boxes with the fire department to open those gates if they need them to be opened?
I'm not aware. I would, I would guess that they would have, but I'm, I've not searched for that.
All right, thanks. Jesse?
If we were to deny this amendment request, would there be a subsequent basis for code enforcement-type actions on the other property owners with the fence, the driveway gates in that area?
Yes. We're aware of it now. Nancy did the research, went through it. We don't have approvals for those gates and those fences, so.
Joseph?
The construction of a four-foot fence on a typical property requires a permit, right?
Say that again?
The construction of a transparent four-foot fence would require a permit?
If it's compliant with the code, it doesn't require a permit.
Okay. Okay. Any ex parte communications? At this time, I'll open up for public comment. Would the applicant come forward? Please state your name.
I've got a little PowerPoint, and if I could use that.
Okay.
No, 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 wait, if I don't see a mover here, I'm going to get off.
Okay. Good evening, Chairman Lor and members of the commission. My name is Chuck Stevenson, and I'm here representing Mr. Phil Davis, who's the owner of the property. And as staff has indicated, this was a condition that was placed on the CUP at the time of the hearing, was sort of at the tail end of the hearing. And not to, not to say argue with the point, but there wasn't much discussion about why a prohibition against any driveway gate was listed. There were no findings for that. So that's another point I want to get to in a moment, that if some alternative gate design or location were acceptable to your commission, then we would want that opportunity to maybe work with staff, come up with an alternative that would be acceptable, and perhaps come back to you. But we understand, as a planner, I understand, I think generally, what the direction was with the commission, which was the idea of having gated-off front yards in traditional neighborhoods is probably not a friendly thing to do and probably to be discouraged. And I think I would agree with that. What we have, though, and if you've been on West Avenue just a block away, you notice that it is split by two zoning categories, commercial service, not commercial retail, but commercial service and residential. That street functions a lot like a commercial alley. It's, there's a lot of deliveries, there's a lot of outdoor activity. Even the mixed-use businesses that are along there have garages down below that are being rented out for non-residential purposes. So it is pretty active. This sort of illustrates, again, and staff showed this, I prepared this earlier. So we do have this concern from some of the neighbors, not all, but some of the neighbors about security. And there is, there has been intrusion by folks walking by in the neighborhood and trespassing on property. So this is an unusual street, and for that reason, the applicant and others have desired to have a driveway gate. So this is just a site layout. The garage is set back 40-some feet from the edge back of sidewalk. So if an alternative location were preferred by your commission, Mr. Davis could consider moving it back if that's a concern. But four feet high, completely open fencing is allowed, and that would be something that Mr. Davis also would be amenable to lowering it, the request from six foot down to perhaps five or even four feet to be in compliance. This is the home. I'm familiar with a number of the homes on this street, designed this one and the one next door with Mr. Merrifield. And you'll be seeing another one in a couple of weeks that I designed. So the gate itself is wide open visually with wrought iron. The intent is not to preclude view in, but to, for security. Again, I'm kind of a street view up and down the street. Even, you'll notice, even in this case, this is a six-foot fence, and I've advised Mr. Davis he needs to, he needs to lower it anyway. But you'll notice that it's very visible and is hardly that noticeable even at that And just a little bit of a close-up of a mangate and the fence and the pileraster, again, compatible with the house. This was the proposed gate. It's not been installed. When Mr. Davis was made aware that this was a violation and he needed to come in and apply for this, he stopped to work on the fence. This was the proposed gate that's not been installed. Again, just showing the attractive wrought iron design. As I pointed out earlier, there are a variety of uses here, and I wanted to point out just that this is the auto body shop. These are garages that are rented out for non-residential purposes. The street even has a center drain that looks like an alley. A lot of cars, a lot of activity in the area with deliveries, drop-off workers, folks that are not resident visitors, looking north to this location. Other houses have gates on the, on the front property line, and this would be similar to those. So I think the policy question in my mind is, didn't it, didn't appear that there was any general plan guidance on a prohibition against driveway gates, and there wasn't any specific zoning ordinance that precludes it? In fact, if you look at, take a reading of the zoning ordinance relative to when fencing is appropriate, you could interpret this as supportive. So standards for fencing and screening are established by this section for the following purposes, to protect certain uses from intrusion or to mitigate incompatibility with differing adjacent uses. And if it's 50% or more open to passage of light and air and not exceeding four feet in height, it could be appropriate at the street yard. So my request for your commission is to sort of see this as unique, and if you did decide to approve some gate in the front setback, that there could be unique findings that wouldn't set a precedent for other neighborhoods, because I would, I would support not doing that. But these are, this is unique, and I think with appropriate findings, you could, you could find a way to approve a gate. And we're open to the possibility of some options. And I know the resolution is for denial, but we consider perhaps a continuance if the direction of your commission is otherwise, and we could be happy to work with you. So those are my remarks and available for questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll call you, call you back after we hear. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Please step forward.
Hello. My name is Bill Merrifield, and I'm the owner of 1147 West Avenue, sometimes known as 1147 West Street. First of all, I think the question I need to ask, did you get a copy of my response to this request to put in a driveway gate? If you did, there's no need for me to kind of, to go through this item by item. I do a couple of things in this, in this paper, this argument against the gate. A lot of it has to do with chronology. And I have seen, both in the staff's paperwork and have held or heard on several occasions that, excuse me, Mr. Davis was not aware of the prohibition until, I believe, the date was, it was in April of 2017, I believe. In any event, in my dealings with the prior owner, Mr. A.J. Wright, who was the builder, and he informed me, and I think this is pertinent, on the, again, this is in my memo and also it's recorded in my, I kept a daily ledger. And it's, all this is documented and can be supported in this ledger in context. But in, after the 119 of 2016 in which the Planning Commission prohibited this driveway gate, shortly thereafter, just four days, Mr. Wright informed me that he had sold this lot to Mr. Davis at this time. So he was knowledgeable and aware of what was going on down there far before anything was built. According to Mr. Wright, again, as supported in my journals, was aware at this time and certainly was aware at that time also, in the May 16, 2016, when the approved drawings came out and work permits were granted, all this, the prohibition was in, was part of the drawing package, part of the construction package. So it's, to me, it's disingenuous to make a statement that he had gone ahead and did all this building and wasn't aware of the prohibition until April of 2017. He knew at least a year prior to that, or approximately a year prior to that. So, and having known at this time, he was still within the appeal period of that initial, the hearing of 119 of 2016, he could have, if he disagreed with it at that time, he could appeal this to the city council, which he did not. I would assume that he did the same thing I did. A week later, I signed a statement saying that I was, would be in compliance with the conditions set forth on one, again, let me see and make sure I got the 11916 date. So he was aware of it and went ahead, chose to, in my mind, just ignore this prohibition, say, I'll take my chances later on, and come back after the fact. And I think, and this is just opinion on my side, that perhaps Whitney Mathelveen, who was a staff planner at the time, had said no, and that's what, you know, so the gates were never actually hung. I think they were probably manufactured, but they weren't actually hung on the pillars, the post pillars that were to carry and support that gate. So kind of moving on forward until July of 2017, seeing what Mr. Davis had done out there, I asked him over the fence. I said, Mr. Davis, are you aware that there, a gate is prohibited? A driveway gate is prohibited. He informed me that, no, he did not know. And I said, there was a prohibition. He said he wasn't aware of it. I asked him if Mr. Wright, the previous owner and builder, had made him aware of it, and he said, no. Well. Well, all of this is, I guess, well and good, but a condition like this runs with the land. The fact that he didn't realize it, but that, that condition set forth on the 19th, January 19th, 2016, was still a prohibition, even though it was sold. So, and then getting back, and getting away from the chronology and what Mr. Davis did know or didn't know, you know, I can't really say for a fact that he did, but he certainly should have, and any, any person buying, buying a home, buying a lot would certainly look at the drawings and if need be, make modifications before the actual, the building actually started. And I know there were some modifications, so he did see the drawings. Getting back to, getting away from personalities, again, as I've stated in my, my memo, the predominant use of that street is residential. Bare Metal, the auto body shop, is the only commercial activity that fronts on that, that street in its present form. So to make, to say that there's, there's a substantial commercial use, I think is really, again, overplaying the fact. I have talked with the owners of Bare Metal on several occasions. I use their trash can when I have an overflow of, of some things I can't put into my own trash. They're very cooperative. If I ask them to move a car or to be a little bit more responsible in their activities in that, on West Avenue, they have been so, and I have a good relationship with them. There was an isolated event avenue with, I guess illustrative of crime in the area of something that went on at Carla's Kitchen back in 2017. I don't know, was this the first episode in 30 years? I don't know. But to, from one isolated event, to jump from there and say that everybody needs to have a fence on that street, you know, there's a, there's a crime wave of ruin. I'm not buying into that. One reason I'm here in Morro Bay, I love the city, I love the atmosphere, and I love the fact that you can go out and walk, walk at night and you're not in fear. And I, I'd like to keep that smaller town, that, that feeling. And I think we're also a tourist town, and I think when we start barricading houses up and down the street, I think we're not really acting as a, that's not acting as an enticement to bring tourism into the city, and that's, I would think, is a major source of the city's life and blood.
Mr. Merrifield, could you please conclude? We've given you a little extra time, seeing as we don't have.
Oh, I didn't know I was under a time limitation.
We usually try to keep it to three minutes, but, you know.
Well, then, if you've read all this, I'm just probably reading what you've already read. Just to jump to my conclusions, then. For reasons stated by staff, I feel that there is a prohibition on the gate. I believe that we can be good neighbors. I'm certainly happy to look over or look at, look next door, and if there's any criminal activity in process, I'm more than happy to call Mr. Davis, and I would just as soon ask, work with Neighborhood Watch rather than, than go into fortifying ourselves, make, ask the police department, and I've seen him do cruise buys on West Avenue. I don't think front walls are necessary in Morro Bay. It's a bad image for Morro Bay, a tourism city. These are the journals, I waved those at you, I'll wave goodbye.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, seeing as we have no other people here, let's, do we have any questions for the applicant? Joseph, I'll give you, Jesse?
No questions.
Okay. Richard, any questions? And I have none, so I'll close public comment. Let's, do we have questions for staff or, or comments?
I have comments.
Excuse me.
I should have spoke up, just because I am, before you close it to public comment, I.
Okay, come, come forward to the, to the podium. I'll open up public comment at this point.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Just to sort of have.
Be brief.
Just have a, again, sort of a, a back and forth a little bit about if there's some options.
Okay.
The condition said no, no driveway gate, and I think, and I'm talking with staff about, well, there, maybe if it moves, moved back to the setback, what would, what would be the problem with having a gate for security at the setback, or at some distance between, or lower? I mean, there's some variables that I just was hoping your commission would consider options rather than just a straight-up no.
Okay, okay, and just to, to answer your comment earlier, I'll, I don't want to get this into a back and forth, but we've had extensive discussions on gated driveways in several different areas, both in the commercial adjacent areas and also in residential areas. And we had extensive, you know, discussions during the compatibility, residential design guidelines, too. So there has been a lot of discussion on the, on this, on this issue. So thank, thank you very much. I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission, so. Who wants to step forward on this one?
Again, you know, as usual, I sort of begin with, what do people know before the dispute begins, okay? And so I have to conclude that the applicant had actual, or if not actual, constructive notice of what the neighborhood and its commercial aspects looked like. With respect to the prohibition about the gate, it's also pretty clear that the applicant had actual or constructive knowledge that a gate wasn't to be permitted. There's nothing in their record that I would call evidence of the nature or the frequency of the intrusions in the property, which would be some sort of overarching need to have a gate and provide security. There's just nothing there to indicate, except some sort of hearsay comments about what happened sometime in the past. And the fact, for me, it's really important, is that there is a six-foot fence that should only be a four-foot fence. And the notion, I agree with Commissioner Lur, that the, the suggestion that there was a lack of detail in the discussion of the gate prohibition is simply inaccurate. But even if it were accurate, it would still be within the purview of this body to, to decide not to have gates representing community values. So those are my thoughts.
Jesse?
I agree with Commissioner Inggraffia. I don't want to assume that the applicant's being disingenuous, however, it seems as if there was ample time to acquire the information he needed that a gate wasn't to be permitted. So in my opinion, permitting a gate when it was specifically prohibited would be rewarding bad behavior, which I'm on the record as saying I don't want to do. So those are my thoughts.
Richard?
Yeah, I, I remember, I'm not sure if it was this project or not, but we had an pretty, pretty intense discussion regarding fencing and gates and walls in this, on this West Avenue, West Street. And I remember we're talking about drainage, too. I remember bringing that issue up and then, you know, and all these things. So to, to state that, you know, you didn't know, I don't know. When I was working in Cayucus one time, I was, and I'm not saying this is happening here, but it, it appears, you know, I, I remember talking to this one developer, and he goes, "You know, my, my philosophy is, is it's easier to ask for permission, oh, for forgiveness than permission." And I think that that's a bad way to look at things. And I think that we, you know, we, we need to, we need to stay within the parameters of what we're required to uphold in this zoning.
Michael?
I think one of the things about those properties is, I think, at least three of those have come before the planning commission as, because of the bluff-top situation, they're some of the most exquisite properties we have. We give them extraordinary care in the way we look at it, and I was on the commission that said no gates on that property. So I, I remember we talked about no gates. And it's for the exact reasons that were mentioned by Mr. Merrifield, that, that we aren't interested in developing a bunker mentality. But beyond the aesthetics of that, is, is, it's unbelievable to me that you build a six-foot fence and place everybody's properties at risk, because a first responder can't get over a six-foot fence. They, if they don't have the key, they can't get in the driveway. They're trying to fight a fire in a house that might be unoccupied from 40, 50 feet away. We don't have bluff-top access on the other side. This is the only way to get to those properties, to service anything. So whether it's a child in a yard, and a raccoon or a coyote or a whatever comes in through the fence, they can't get at it. Police can't get at it. If the house is on fire, you can't get in the fence. So to me, the neighbor's rights are being violated by a life safety issue of, of the six-foot fence. The four-foot fence, we assume our, our first responders can get over those things. You know, we can, we can, we can get around that issue. But I, I can't believe that we have something in writing that we're being asked to reconsider. That's my position.
Yeah, I'm firmly in the same camp as, as what's been stated here. There's, it's not, I don't think it's a Morro Bay value to, to fets off residential properties, and we've, we have this stated in, it has a planning condition, and then we also have it stated in the residential design guidelines. And we went through these properties with pretty fine-tooth comb. We were even, you know, I had problems with the entryways being set so far back and how isolated the projects were as they were, and to further isolate them off with a, with a fence and a gate. And these are, these are the most exquisite properties that we have in Morro Bay. So I think it's a privilege to be there, you know, rather than a, than an imposition, that they shouldn't make any more impositions on the community. So do we have a motion?
I have a question before we take a motion. Mr. Stevens did request some consideration for the concept of, would it be acceptable to place a gate at, at four feet back out of the setback? So 20 feet into the property, would it be acceptable to be in that location? Thoughts?
I'll go first on this one. I just, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a good idea, a good idea to place a gate across a driveway at any, at any point. I think you can, you know, he's got the, he's got the ability to fence his property, he's got the ability to fence it, you know, as a, you know, he can go, he can go higher, further back, and can tie into his, you know, to his entryway without, without fencing the, across the driveway for, if he wants to do security that way, then he has that ability to do that. But I don't think it's a viable, I don't think it's viable to fence the driveway at any point back to the, to the garage door. That's my position.
I agree. Viability might not be a word. I would choose, I would just say, I just don't, I don't agree with that, with, with putting gates across the driveways. Matter of fact, you know, without putting too fine a point on it, we might have to discuss how to deal with the other properties that may be non-conforming on that street additionally, so that's my opinion.
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, granting discretion is influenced by the fact that that is a six-foot fence and not a four-foot fence, and that the prohibition was in the, in the plans that were available when the property was transferred.
Yeah, I, I, I concur with, with what the other commissioners are stating. I just don't, you know, like you, you mentioned, when we were looking at that project, these projects are pushed toward the bluff and stuff, and if they were set back a little bit, this, the distance, the situation would, would be different. Yeah, I, I think that, I don't agree with that.
Michael?
I concur with the discussion.
I appreciate, appreciate the input. I just, I really did that so the applicant could hear it, and understand that the decision's made to appeal the decision here this evening, that the planning commission weighed in on that, and 5-0 was not in favor of it, that's why I did that.
And Scott, if I remember correctly, and correct me if I am wrong, but we, we had problems with fence heights prior to even these projects coming before us on, on these or adjacent sites, and had to have fences, you know, removed down to adequate heights.
We've had several occasions where that's been the case.
Yeah. So, okay, so let's, let's spin up a motion here.
Before I start, I'm trying to make sure I'm reading the language correctly on the resolution that is attached to our packet here. You stated, there is some discussion about the driveway gate, and basically it's saying that it's not allowed, correct?
You'd be adopting Resolution PC 10-18, denying the request for the gate, you know, leaving in place the condition on the project.
Mm-hmm. As, as it was originally approved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That prohibited the gate installation.
Okay. Second?
So, to be clear, we may resolve that the gate will be prohibited and the fence will be lowered to four feet?
The fence is not, the fence is in violation right now of our fence site requirements, and staff will pursue taking it down. The applicant seemed to indicate that, you know, were they unsuccessful, that they would be willing to, to reduce it. Otherwise, we'd go through a code enforcement process and, and have it removed.
And, and the ramifications of this decision would affect the property on the corner, which seems to have been there for 50 years?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that one's grandfather did.
Do, do we have to take, is there, is there something Mr. Merrifield mentioned in his discussion about the location of one of the pillars for the fence being? I don't think we're requiring anything in particular to be removed in terms of all constructions, just the fence itself, right?
They have to bring the fence, we have fence site requirements, they're not compliant right now, they put in a fence, the fencing that was too tall. They need to, they will have to lower it. Again, the applicant seemed to realize that and said, "Okay, you know, we, we realize it's too tall," and, and they would move forward with that. If they don't, then we'll assist them.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution PC 10-18, for the planning commission to deny amendment request A 00-055 of the planning commission Resolution 516, planning commission number 19 prohibiting installation of a driveway gate in the proposed single-family residence at 1149 West Street.
I'll second. Okay, any discussion?
I'm not, to be clear, there's a pillar that is going to be able to stay there? Is that right? Because that's part of it, or what?
The, the fencing's going to be brought into whatever the requirement is, so if there's thing, they're going to have to bring it down to.
Okay.
To four feet.
All right, got it, got it.
It's, it's not, it's not compliant now, it'll be compliant when we're, when all said and done.
Okay. Just call for a question? Everybody's?
Commissioner Sadowski?
Hi.
Commissioner Barone?
Hi.
Commissioner Inggraffia?
Hi.
Vice Chair Lucas?
Hi.
Chairperson Lur?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, there, Item C is new. Okay, uh, there, uh, item C is new business. We have none. Uh, item D, uh, well, new business. At this point, do we want to talk about possibly having a discussion on parking exemptions? Parking and where are...
So I, so, yeah, certainly, if you'd, if you'd like to agendize that, we can take a look at the agenda moving forward over the next few meetings and see if we can't place along one of those.
Okay.
Um, we do have a lot of things lined up coming forward, so it, it might not be immediate, um, because we have general plan things coming forward and...
Let's, let's not place it with the IER, IER on the waterfront.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Water reclamation plan.
Yeah. So, uh, so, but yeah, I mean, I, I'm happy to bring something forward.
Okay.
Um, just so you can have an opportunity to discuss it.
Okay.
Sure.
You know, staff times permits. And then also, I guess, on new business, do we have to do, you know, seeing as we're now aware of illegal gates on that property, will that be a court, code enforcement item or do we...
We're, we're just going to look into it, yeah. I mean, once, once Nancy completed the research on it and found that we didn't have the coolest for any of them, then it ends up on the radar, so to speak.
One thing I would ask you to do is, is confer with the fire department about these things, because it's a real concern to me that those people have violated what's a zoning code that actually places these neighbors at risk.
Without an OX box, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Unfinished business? We have none. Uh, planning commissioner comments? Anybody jumping up?
Got a lot to do.
Okay, uh, okay, community development director's comments?
Would not, I guess you guys are getting ready to go to your conference here, right?
Yeah.
So, uh, look forward to hearing back from you. Unfortunately, I, I'm not able to go. Too many things on the front burner right now. Um, also, you made a, you brought it up, Commissioner Lur, that, um, that the EIR for the water reclamation facility is out now. It's, there's a link on the city's website to it, and you can, so you can, you could download the whole thing. We also put it up there in pieces, because it's fat thick. Um, and we have copies available for people to review if they want to look at hard copies. Um, right now, we have, uh, in the community development, in Public Works Building, we have a couple of copies in there. I think we have four now. Um, we have a couple over at the library, um, and I think we're getting a couple of more tomorrow to put over at City Hall. Um, so anyway, we have hard copies available if you want to come in and look through them that way, uh, low tech and, uh, I suppose they're doing it online, but, um, they are available and they're out there, so take a look.
And do you have on the website the WFI application, um, document as well?
Just asking, I'm not sure. I, I don't know if that's up there or not. I, I, that's not something I've been involved with. I've been involved with the EIR, um, you know, because at some point it's going to likely come before this box, so...
Because there's, that might be a good one to put up there, because there's several issues and concerns regarding some of the, um, nomenclature. One of them is that our wastewater treatment plan is polluting the estuary, and I'd like to get some clarity on that one.
Okay. Um, Scott, I'd also like to just bring up an item. I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not, but I'm going to do it. Um, on the, um, the working waterfront, um, that we, we'd gone through, the one thing that I thought about that may be a factor is the subdivision of, uh, commercial sites or whatever commercial sites we have left that are of large, large area. That's one of the ways that, uh, there's a degradation to working waterfronts is large tracks being subdivided and then, or large parcels being subdivided and then not being able to be reassembled for commercial uses. So is there anything left down there as a large commercial track in that southern area?
Not. It's zoned appropriately. Uh, Mr. Martin, he was right. I mean, the area that's the commercial piece is very thin. I don't know if it's 35 feet wide or not. Uh, might be a little wider than that, but I mean, it's, it's not much wider if it is.
Yeah.
That's the commercial area, and we're not, I mean, like, like I said before, we're not proposing any changes to that.
Right.
We want to maintain that commercial. If that use comes back, then great. I mean, fantastic. Um, other than that, the, you know, those properties are split, have a split zoning, which you usually don't want to have, but it's a unique situation. So the areas that are inland of those, on those lots, um, you know, have residential zoning on them. That's probably not going to change, because they have houses on them. Um, so it would just be that area down on the water, and there's no intent to change that. Um, the only other piece of commercial property that's down there is, uh, the end of Morro Bay. So...
And that's pretty much a single site with...
Yeah, a single site with a visitor-serving use on it that's probably not going away anytime soon.
Yeah.
You know, so, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't see us, I don't see that we have any other larger pieces of property there in that area. There's a, there's some other residentially zoned property that's there, because there's the condo development that's there.
And is, is the marina there, the, uh, the old, uh, co-op, uh, co-op marina there that was the Fisherman's Co-op? Is that commercial site all the way up, or is that residential up?
Where was that?
The, the Beacons Field Dock, the old Fisherman's Co-op?
I don't think it's commercial all the way in, no. I think it's just the stuff on, it's that portion on the front, waterfront portion of it, I believe. Like, there's just not that much, you know, commercial area, commercial land, zoned land in that area. It's a strip, like, Mr. Martin is correct.
Yeah.
Thin, thin strip, and then there's the visitor-serving, that's the, that's the hotel.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you for the...
Okay, at this point, I guess we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building at 209 Surf Street on April 17th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. Thanks, our thanks to everybody.